Well, we're glad to see everybody. Glad you're here. It looks cool outside the window. But anyway. Commission, fire it on last year.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come this morning asking your blessing upon this meeting. Enable this commission to make the decision for the betterment of society in general. Bless those who were in attendance. These blessings we ask in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Oops, I'm sorry.
The United States of America and the Republic of which expands one nation, another one, and invisible liberty and justice law.
Well, we want to thank everyone that comes, especially the commissioners that had to make a special time. I was part of that going to all meeting, and I think it's very important that we all know. I remember when the utility bill at my house was about three or four dollars.
I remember that part of that.
And it cracked in that house too. Anyway, I think that's what we're here for. Uh, and if there's a lot more reading available in other places, as well as a gentleman that lived in Indian Springs that wrote a pretty good synopsis of all that. And it's very interesting. And um, if you were reading it, he, his story is that it's forty-four percent increase. They also had a five percent increase just a few years ago, four, five years ago. It's in this late paper here. If anybody cares to have one, I brought a few actually. So I think that's important that we all, at some point in time, as they would say at the square dance, hold hands and swings to the right, but we're, that's just a little bit too much for most of constituents to follow. Is there some of us that can probably pay that? Yes. But it'll put just as much strain on one person as it will the other in the amount if it goes through with it. And I think as what I can read, I think a lot of it has already been established. But anyway, I encourage everybody here to be on the no side. If there's any possible way, I hope we all can. Thank you. All right? And if uh,
Well, I'll jump back and offer a motion that we approve the agenda.
Yes, okay. Second. Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, which is not very long. All in favor say aye. I raise your hand. Same way. Thanks. Okay, I'll open the floor for anybody that wants to speak in it. And then get our guests or anybody at the table.
I, I think that I do know being in business before. You know, you have things that cost you that you had to have some kind of increase. But if forty-four percent is kind of strenuous, I think. Uh, I just kind of run it through my head like real quick, like that's almost fifty percent. I mean, you know, it's something to think about real quick. I know forty-four percent, but a close fifty. If you had a three hundred dollar light bill, that means your light bill is gonna go to four fifty. So I, I don't, somewhere I think they need to look at back. Uh, somewhere they could reduce some and help people too and still let them live.
Absolutely.
That's why, that's the way I feel about it, you know? Uh, I, I always, when I ran my business, I tried to live and let live.
Yes.
The way I did. My, I do know you had to have a proper, but you know how to get rich on it.
Yes.
Chairman, I, I guess my concern is that, if I'm wrong correctly, the citizens have to, to provide the, excuse me, utility company has, has the Public Utilities Commission for rate increases, is that right? So I assume that process has already been carried out?
Processes, I think it's in the process of occurring, and that, I think that's part of what this process says.
And some of it has already been because a lot of it's set. We're set for a public hearing here on the eighth, if I re- I remember right. And they didn't get to that far without coming to the Board of Commissions, which is fine. But at the same time, something, something happens, you know?
And, and I'm assuming that the citizens could have an opportunity to protest the rate increase with that commission, is that right?
They, they have the opportunity to speak in a public session uh, and, and to either say that they are for or against the proposed rate increases. I understand that on August twenty-second, just for the public, uh, FPU, uh, FPUC filed a petition with the Florida Public Service Commission seeking approval to increase rates and charges to produce an additional twelve million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars per, per year. Uh, as Commissioner Crutchfield pointed out, uh, it's about a, it could end up being as much as a forty-four percent increase to average utility companies. And I was talking to my sister yesterday um, who owns a small house on uh, on during. And her electric bill of this past month was six hundred dollars. And uh, it's an older house. It's got, you know, probably not the highest efficient air conditioning unit, but still that, you know, that's a, that's a huge, huge utility bill just for electric utility. And they're talking about increasing it again. So it's definitely a concern.
Do we know when the Public Service Commission will make that, we can say, a motion will?
Uh, it's, it's being offered to them, and I'm sure that's the reason they're sending, it's now their information says that they're sending at least two or one and maybe two commissioners to hear at that public hearing.
Uh, But now that's not the, Public Service Commission is not having that here?
Yes, that's what I, that's what I read. Am I not reading the right thing?
On page, on page five, there's a letter that Fred Brown that says.
Very much sums it up, pardon me.
Said, I have planned to voice these concerns at the January eighth Public Service Commission meeting.
It also says on October first, twenty twenty-four, the commission, the Florida, uh, approved the portion of the company's request pertaining to interim rates, which become effective thirty days from the commission's vote. These rates provide temporary relief for the company while the commission processes the company, uh, the company's request for permanent relief. So I, I'm, I'm taking that these rates have already gone into effect on an interim basis until the Florida Public Commission makes a final determination uh, of permanent relief.
Well, I can see where it says that Public Service Commission will hold a hearing on January the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, we, we do not, I don't know whether we will be very convincing or not, but at the same time, uh, Mr. Clark is on that board or on the commission. He comes from Chippewa, Florida, and he's worked a long time at West Florida Electric, I think. Most people I've been knowing him mostly all mine his life. I don't, I don't say that I can know how to influence him, but anyway. Uh, that is part of it, and I would assume that he would be one of the ones that come being from, from near here. I served on the Telecommunication Utilities Committee in the Florida House, but that's been twenty, twenty-five years ago. And this was a huge concern to everybody on that board at every time we ever met that something was mentioned about it, and it was a lot of discussion there. But that's been a long time and things have changed. Now, what I have seen over the last few years, I haven't seen many no's. I've seen mostly yeses to them increasing, but sometimes politics take that over as we all know. And it's uh, we, we had a, a man that I think he's passed away now, a gentleman named Jack Sree. And he was about as good as I or saw it, explaining something and telling us what was good and what was bad. And uh, I don't know if they still go through that procedure, no. This, this only came to me in just last week, and uh, so it, it's been a short amount of time coming. Or I would have asked everybody to come, and while I'm sitting here thinking about it, I appreciate everybody here coming. And I appreciate every commissioner taking his time to come as well, and I thank you very much personally. But anyway, uh, I would say that we would have pretty good challenge in our hands, but I say let's take that challenge, you know? Nothing beats a try but a failure in life. So that's the way I would look at that and approach that. Uh, I very much appreciate anybody that's, that's in the audience that would attend that meeting as well on the eighth at the, I believe it's the, the church, Rivertown Church, if I'm correct. Is that correct, Madam?
Um, I actually think it's on Penn Avenue at the.
Well, you know, I think you're right. You're right. That was a different, that was a different meeting.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, forty-one Penn Avenue.
Okay, that's at the Ag Center on Penn Avenue. Fortunately, we have two Ag Centers. And that's uh, that's, maybe that's a plus and I would have had, but anyway. I've uh, I have been to those hearings, but it was a long, long, long time ago. And as we all know here, that's older like me. We have a, our Public Service Commission used to be voted upon and elected. Of course, now it's appointed, but the Constitutional Revision Committee took that out years and years and years ago, and it obviously hasn't gone back in. But anyway, we have a lot of people in our community, in our county that will have situation where they need help, you know? And I even saw one time in the, in the telecommunication in the, in the uh, with the phone, well, we had a Lifeline. I don't think they probably have that anymore, but they had a Lifeline and they couldn't have any of the amenities or extra parts. But they could have a Lifeline phone that was almost nothing. And the telecommunications people went right along with it. It was voted there by the, by the telecommunications committee. So, you know, things change and sometimes we're part of it, but sometimes we're not. But I, I think that's one of the worst things that I've seen in a long, long time, forty-four percent or as Commissioner Crutchfield said, that's, that's gonna be high pretty quick. We welcome any of you all that want to speak, that you've come around here, sir. We glad you came. Thank you for that.
Morning, Steve Dennis.
Good morning.
Concerned Jackson County taxpayer.
Yes.
You may not be able to answer this question immediately, but I would like some follow-up on this. Okay, when it concerns FPU in Jackson County. I've been paying this electric bill for four or five years now, and it's continuously said Jackson County franchise fees as part of the taxation section of my FPU bill. Going back to between July and September of twenty twenty-four, Jackson County disappeared off the bill, but it still says franchise fees that you're paying. So I'd like to know, is Jackson County still collecting this franchise fee? And why have we lost the transparency on the FPU bill that no longer says Jackson County franchise fees? And Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm listening to you speak about uh, members of the community that are gonna need help and how politics take over the commission, uh, the Public Utilities Commission, you know, when they make their decisions. It's my understanding that this franchise fees that you all collecting on comes from the right of way of where the electric uh, wires and poles are placed on the property throughout Jackson County. This is something that you don't need to collect on, you chose to collect on, and then without realizing it, it fell back on the taxpayers and everybody who has that account with FPU inside Jackson County. So in other words, you guys are collecting another tax off of our backs, and you, you're no longer willing to even put that transparency on the FPU bill. Are you aware of this, sir?
No, sir, I'm not.
Can you look into it, morning?
Yes, sir, I can.
Will you be able to give me an answer by the next board meeting?
Don't know that.
How about by, by the uh, what was it, the January tenth meeting you're talking about with FPU coming up? Because I think this is, I think, I think this is important. Y'all sit there, you want to carry on about the forty-four percent, but you've got a sliding tax that you're hitting me with, depending on what my usage is, that the county coffers are collecting every month off of every account. Would you be willing to forego that? That revenue?
Well, I would speak personally, would not be in favor of doing that.
So you're collecting more tax or more fees off of, of the citizens?
Very, very.
You're gonna sit here and complain about FPU wanting forty-four percent, but when in fact, you're collecting monies from the taxpayers who have FPU accounts in Jackson County, and you're okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Let, let, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I think y'all a bunch of hypocrites now. If you're gonna sit here and you're gonna complain about FPU, and you're not even willing to go into like an austerity or consideration. All right, you just said it, you're not willing to forgive that, that money you're collecting. You need it that bad, that you're not concerned about the households in Jackson County, Commissioner Don Forham?
We, Don Forham, we are concerned about the households.
Hey, are, are you still the chairman?
No, sir, I'm the chairman.
Ironically, I, I stopped by the commissioner website even before I showed up here today, but it's still identifying you as the chairman of the board, so I thought.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. It's, it's Chairman Westbrook now.
Yes, sir.
We change that from every two years.
But you didn't change it on the website, did you?
I did not.
Okay. Anyways, I appreciate y'all hearing me. I'm sorry if I'm coming off a little edgy, but I hear you sitting there being hypocrites on FPU and how much more they want to charge at forty-four percent. But like I said, you're clipping me every month on my bit, my electric bill for twenty, twenty-five dollars because it's a sliding fee that you're collecting, and you're not willing to forego that. Thank you so much, sir.
Sir, I was on the board of commissioners when this fee was implemented. And essentially what happened, the board of county commissioners decided to charge the utility companies for the use of the county right of way. But we have no control over whether they pass it on to the customers or not.
You can defer receiving that money. You do not have to charge them that right of way fee. And they're simply passing that back on to the, the account holders.
Typically, that happens in most cases. They pass it on to the customer.
I'm, I'm not talking about most cases. We're talking about regular Jackson County, sir.
Well, let's talk specifically about Jackson County again, okay? When that franchise fee was, was proposed and passed by this board, the utility companies are responsible for paying it to the board of county commissioners for the use of county right of way. If they choose to pass it on to the customers, we have no direct control over that whatsoever.
You, you do, I'm afraid. Take that up with the uh, the, the Florida Public Commission of Utilities, and you may be surprised what you learn there, sir. On a follow-up, can we go back to putting Jackson County franchise fees being collected on the FPU bills? Why did that disappear? That's right, you can't answer that.
That's their bill. It's just, I don't know why they did that. I didn't know that changed.
Well, Jackson County is lacking transparency with the money that is collected in the FPU.
It's, it wasn't something that the board asked for. This is something the company apparently chose to do.
I disagree with you, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. If that, if that's the case, I was gonna say that is not something that the board directed or even requested FPUC to do, and I was not aware of that, that they've actually don't include that on their bill anymore.
But I don't think it reflects forty-four percent, provided that's a true statement that Mr. Brown made. I don't think it reflects that much. I think it's just a matter of about.
I, I was gonna ask, and I don't know this question, answering this question, is FPUC or Chesapeake, have they come out and stated the justification for this rate increase? Have we, I mean, I, I kind of understand that everything is increased, the power of, you know, producing the power and maintaining the power lines. I understand all of that is increases, but if they come out and.
I mean, they're, yeah, in this paper, it's the same, okay? Their, their justification here just says they're requesting a rate increase to recover the cost of operating utility and allow FPUC an opportunity to earn a fair rate of return on its investment. That's all it says.
Well, and they also, they bought that company, Florida Public Utilities Chesapeake Bay. So they should have known that going in. If I buy something in my business, then I know what the overhead of it is as best began anyway. But yes, they are using uh, some of our right of way and their, their poles and uh, our law enforcement, whenever they run into one and break it and that sort of thing. So there's other, other things to be considered there.
There are additional costs to the county as a result of them using our right of way to place our poles. It costs us more to maintain those, having to cut around those poles. So there's, there is a justification for us being paid for the use of that right of way. And it's not just FPU that does that. I think we have franchise fees from other utility companies that uh, that use our right of way as well.
Telephone company.
Telephone company, Comcast, I mean, a, a number of them, right?
But we do, but we do, we don't know if the decision about this is going to happen, occur tomorrow at that meeting or to later night.
I, I don't think it will, no.
I don't think it'll happen tomorrow. This is just a.
Public Service Commission is doing this though tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it's just to hear from the public is what this indicates.
For the public and or local officials, selected officials to basically express their opposition to the rate increase or their support for the rate increase. And uh, that they, the, the Florida Public Service Commission will optimistically take those comments into account. Um, when the city of Mariana several years ago, I was the commissioner at the time, was looking to uh, take over the electric utility uh, from both utilities. Different times, once when I was on there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we went to the Public Service Commission, and uh, I, I will be honest, I, I really felt at that time that our presentation, both Mr. Dean, Jim Dean and myself went over, I really felt like our presentation to the Public Service Commission fell on deaf ears. I mean, I really did. I, I, they were polite, uh, but uh, you know, at the end result, uh, very non-committal to our request. And I really felt like uh, it, you know, it was a wasted trip, to be honest with you.
I, I concur with you. I went to several during the time when I was in the legislature, and they, they were pretty cut and dry, almost. The question, you could tell by the questions they had, that it was pretty well in in their hands. But anyway, then we had, during that time, there was a lot of talk about the utility companies or the power companies losing their grasp on things, just like the telephone companies did. And uh, the telephone companies, as we saw, it was kind of rugged when it began, but when it came, when it came away from that, now it pretty well settled. But they were certainly, they, they were certainly afraid of that happening. And they tried their best to get commitments from any of us members on the committee. The committee was huge. It was fifteen people on that committee. And they, they would steady lobbying you at all time if that happened, but it kind of went away. You know, not because I didn't commit to them, and I don't, I don't know about any of the rest of them, but anyway, that was the feeling I got that way.
Mr.? Go ahead. I'd like to propose a motion that this board um, struck the letter to the Public Service Commission expressed their opposition to the rate increase.
I got it. Motion from Doc Spire, to Mr. Brown.
Baller again.
Against, against.
All who, all in favor to send the letters. Send the letter. Get down. Okay. Other discussion, other question, other thought.
Who will actually write the letter will.
I'm assuming.
Please, please draft it for the chairman's review and signature.
And, and basically, this is gonna be a letter stating uh, the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners is in opposition to the proposed rate increases um, based on um, the difficulties that it's gonna basically provide. The citizens of Jackson County are already stressed out uh, with a number of other high costs, something to that effect.
Sure. Well, this county has not moved forward in population in a long, long time, and we all have been here all our lives and know that. Now, at the same time, I wouldn't say that's utility, just people thought. I'm just saying that for the citizens of this county. And obviously, the governor projected several time that we were accounting, it was in, was constrained. And I'm assuming he meant because of the financial end of it. So something to be thought about, if, if, as Commissioner Spire said. That's a good motion in my opinion, uh, because that's part of the explanation for it. I'm not trying to push, of course, we've already voted anyway, but not to push anybody in any direction. But certainly, our fee times what they want to add is uh, pretty, pretty fair.
And just to be clear, the actual proposed final rates, if you look at this second sheet, the proposed final rates is proposed by FPUC Chesapeake are, are higher than the interim rates, which actually went into effect November first.
Right. And five years ago, they got a rate increase. Somewhere there's information there that puts in that public newspaper.
It says in twenty fourteen that they got a, a rate increase.
What, what in? I don't know that. It's in this article, it's in one of the newspapers. You should have one there.
Twenty fourteen on this document.
There, there's twenty nineteen. I'm sorry, Doc Spire. Go ahead, Doc Spire.
That seems to be, we also, the county's pay a franchise dues as well on our accounts.
Yes.
So I'd like to give the focus a little bit about that also while we're here.
And.
I would just say that, that they spread that, that franchise fee kind of spreads uh, the tax burden out among everyone who has an account. So otherwise, when you guys were doing your budget, you'd have to increase property taxes, which would only fall on the property owner. This falls on everybody who has a utility account. Um, as I was telling Doc Spire, Doc Spire, we even pay it, the county pays it for the hundred plus accounts that you guys have. Um, you have to pay the franchise fee. Uh, it's on, it's on your bill. But I think when this was initially done, if I remember correctly, and Doc Spire and, and Mr. Crutchfield may remember, it was done to help spread the, the burden out instead of it always falling on the property owner.
Everybody pays.
Yes, right.
Is that just a set fee or is it on a percentage?
Yeah. I think it's on a percentage. I'm not exactly sure of the calculation.
Six.
Okay, it's percentage.
Percentage of the dollar of, of the amount of usage.
Yeah.
If, if, then if they damage utility on our property, are they still, why then we pay for it? Or they assume they're supposed to go there?
If they, if they damage it, then they pay for it.
Right. What about if, if motivated were to hit a telephone, stop station, whatever we call it?
Does they feel us for that? Right, right. Yeah. So we, it kind of depends really, but if they hit it, we know we did it, we paid half that fix.
Well, I, I'm also would say that if you, in telepathy in the meetings, in those committee meetings, that you'll see the room would be full of people, provided that had a lot of money tied to it. And the Telecommunication Utilities Committee would be full and have standing room only in the two years that I was there. And that tells you right there, you can go to another committee meeting, it won't be two people in there. But all those that's tied with the, with the economy and the money, which is, that's one, that's probably, if it's not the main one, it's close. Something to think about. Something to think about. I know some people hadn't been there. Of course, when I was elected to go there, I was there every time. But anyway. Had a lot of votes on there and had a lot of votes on there for a reason. To pass what they wanted to pass. Most committees you'd see be. Anywhere from seven to ten or twelve, but that that committee had fifteen on it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Dofro, let me remember, what was the controversy when the city of Mariana was considering. Assuming responsibility for utilities and taking it from FPU.
Remember, it went to a referendum that was voted on by those affected uh utility customers. And it was narrowly defeated. I don't remember the exact percentage. I think there were some, there was some misinformation that was out there that uh. Uh, a lot of the uh, the people that worked for FPU uh would lose their jobs as a result of that. Uh, which was not really the case because I think the city would have hired those uh workers on to work, uh, you know, within the electric utility division of the city. Um, I think there was concerns that uh. The uh, the city would not be able to operate the electric utility as uh efficiently. Uh, as economically or be as responsive to problems as uh FPU was able to be. And there were concerns about uh utility rate increases, but uh. Um, in my, my estimation, in my opinion, uh, the citizens would have been better off.
And.
Because I mean, you've seen they've closed the uh, the one office that's here in Mariana FPU. So now, I mean, you have no. Uh, capability of even going anywhere and talking to anybody about a problem. Uh, so you know, I I think, you know, the fact that it would have been locally operated and locally managed would have been beneficial.
Okay, it was the proposed rate increase that brought that discussion on, is that right?
Yes.
Had a time certain on it, didn't it, Commissioner? Didn't it where they could bring that up a certain amount of years and it was brought up. That was the second time. And all the smaller municipalities in uh. Jackson County, I don't know about the others. But at the same time, they had the same opportunity. City of Akron had the same opportunity. But uh. Anyway, I would also say this. If I may have a floor there, I guess, for myself. The city of Tallahassee has their own. And they make millions of dollars per year. Off that utility and that any kind of indicator. As to who someone had owned one. And I know they were a public entity, but at the same time. But you don't see many. And also, there was a proposal and a bill there one time. When I was there about. The city of Lakeland having their own telephone business and that was voted down by the committee. And there was another, Maryland, Pensacola was another one. I'm not sure of that. But anyway. It, it, none of that made it so. Uh. We all felt like that, for the most part, that they. Really didn't have any business being in the telephone business. And uh. Of course, that was more for, the vote probably went the way of the telephone companies. The already owners. But I also, I had an amendment. In that bill about all that where. If you had six thousand customers or less. The rates didn't increase because we had a rate tied to that as well. And even though it was brought out by my opponent, that that wasn't the way I voted. That was the way I voted. But anyway, and then I had to do with a lifeline as well.
I know another consideration, again, back when we were considering. Um, you know, the city of Mariana taking over ownership of the electric utility. Is that the the profits that typically now go to FPUC and to Chesapeake. Go from this area out of this area. They're they're paid to, uh, you know, profit sharing and to uh their investors. And none of those dollars stay here locally. Whereas if the city of Mariana had taken that over, we would have been able to keep those. Those profits, those monies made from that electric utility and improve the mayor project, improve the the roads and so those dollars. Would stay here in Jackson County.
Right. I think that, like they closed the one here in Mariana, they probably cutting expenses. What they're doing, but they actually want to increase now and cut expenses with hitting the people that's got the major. Power users hitting them both ways, really. You don't have the convenience of talking to somebody really on the phone. Or going talking to somebody in the office or whatever. Like you said, while I go, uh, like Mr. Don Pro said. That you don't have that privilege to do that. At the same time, they want a high increase. I I do know uh, if they have a lot high increases, high increase on them, it shouldn't have that much of a high increase. Like I say, I've had a business before and I get beckoning the. I was in a propane business and. Winter time, this time of the year, like it probably goes up down into something when you don't use it. They can't hardly sell it. They can sell it, they want more money, which it costs and it ain't means. They've charged it and then they just go up higher. But then do they come down? When it's lower? You know, if they want a rate increase, they want to be permanently, you're all, you're around. And so, uh, you know, they, yeah, and like I say, not that much at one time.
But. I would, if you're finished, Dr. You're finished.
Yeah. I would say that the door is locked. At the utility company. No one can get there to protest their bill. And I've had three or four cases that I directed people to the Public Service Commission. That got. Where they had mischarged them, overcharged. And that door is locked. Uh, every day. And if you call them on the telephone, good luck. Didn't, I think they had a problem like you have going down forward, didn't they? How were some people light billed with fifteen hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
I mean, a few years ago, I don't remember exactly how many years ago it is a big thing. At that time, you know, on, on that, that they had, some people just have a struggling high light bill. And I don't know what the answer was to it in the end, but. But. One of mine was not long ago, maybe. Just a few months ago. That. Their rail bill was two hundred and something dollars. But they had them charged with like, it was either fifteen hundred or twenty something hundred dollars and they wouldn't move an inch. But now the Public Service Commissioner moved them rather quickly.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we got the lady back.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead. We glad to have you. Thank you. You like to come to the front, you coming out of heads.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd just like to say that uh, I too am having the same problem with not having anyone in the, in the uh area to talk to. Because I have been on the phone for a long time trying to get. Money that they owe me and still haven't gotten it back because they, even though I get my, my uh. My um. Utility bill come out of my account. They still have not credited my account back for charging, for overcharging me. When I, when they've had no reason to even overcharge me. So I'm really concerned about this and and uh the higher rates. I'm, I'm really concerned because, you know, they don't give you good service and then they want to charge you more. You're not getting good service right now.
What, what's your name, ma'am?
Margaret Spears.
Say it again, darling.
Spears, Margaret Spears. I don't know if anybody else having that problem, but I I do. And then trying to go talk to somebody and. I I remember the, the first time I had a problem, I was just trying to go to the company, didn't even know they had uh. Was bought out because I'm not in the area all the time.
Door is locked, isn't it?
And then I went to the door and it was locked. And then I, and then. And then when I, when I uh tried to get someone on the phone, that was like. I mean, it's, it took me a long time. And then when I even talked to someone. About the money that they had taken out, when it was not even my fault because they take the money right out of my account. And they still haven't put it, put it back into my account. So uh.
Provided you stay till the end of the meeting, I'll take the rest of your information. And I'll certainly have you with that if I can. I'll try.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come forth, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is Merlin Rolack. And I thank Dr. Spires and the entire board for um agreeing to write the letter in in opposition. And my question then is, after the public input meeting tomorrow. And then there will be a compilation, obviously, from the commission. And then they are going to put a proposal back according to the schedule of events on the fourteenth of March. And then you in turn will vote at a special session on the twentieth. My question is, can we as the citizens here in Jackson County count on you to hang on to what your letter is saying? At that final vote in our um.
So you're saying, so you're saying that the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners will. Vote to approve the recommendation of the Florida Public Service Commission?
March twentieth, according to the schedule of events.
If I could just provide some clarity, so I think that when it says the commissioners are expected to vote, I think that's referring to the Public Service Commission.
Oh, okay. All right. So will you get to have any other input other than tomorrow? With us, uh, if we attend that meeting and talk.
You know, that, that's a good question. I think that we can, I think we can request an audience with the Florida Public Service Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can, because Florida is a open government.
Absolutely. They, okay.
Look, we thank you.
And thank you.
Anything less than polling the board, I guess, we can probably answer that now. But I am, my neck can still turn. If anyone, yeah. Come forth.
Mr. Chair, I have something to discuss, but it's not related.
That's fine. It looks like we about finished with, with we agree with it all. Ahead, we about finished with it. Come forth. Go right ahead. Good morning, ma'am. We glad to have you.
Appreciate you guys allowing me to speak with you for a few. I won't take much of your time. Um. But I want to talk to the board a little bit about uh the opioid. Settlement money that came about a couple of years ago. Um, a couple of you knew on the board. I'm not quite sure how much you know about it. But um, there was a lawsuit, sort of like the tobacco settlement lawsuit. And it entails payments to each county. For um, for certain things, treatment. Um, prevention, enforcement, education, certain number of things. So. Over, I think it's been a couple of years that the money has been started dispersed. In the beginning, there were lump sum payments, large sums. And it spans out over approximately seventeen years. And each year it gets smaller. Um. I know so far our county's received, I think over a half a million. Uh, in these, in these funds and it is due to receive more. And I'm here today to ask, I have three individuals that work for me that are grant funded. By the state. Uh, and no cost to you. They're a community services division. Um, they go out to. Opioid crisis situation, any kind of drug overdose, mental health crisis. Um. Assist victims of, of whatever. So. That being said, these three ladies that are employed by us are a huge benefit to the county, huge. Uh, and they don't cost us anything as far as direct. Their salary and benefits and everything through a grant. But these ladies oftentimes. Find themselves driving their personal vehicle to field contacts, out making visits. And these three ladies average probably a hundred and fifty contacts out in the field a month. So I'm here to ask this board. For permission to utilize. Some of that funds to buy three vehicles. I've went to the local Toyota dealership and gotten quotes. On little crossovers, little RAV fours, economical vehicles. They're approximately thirty-three, thirty-four thousand apiece. Entry, entry level model. So I don't think it's right that these, these ladies are driving their POV, their personal vehicle. Um. Now, as it relates to capital outlay, money for vehicles, sheriff's office gets two hundred thousand dollars a year. For purchase of vehicles. We have a hundred vehicles, seventy-some more. Two hundred thousand dollars is three cars. So. Uh, that's my request respectfully.
Or a question when you get finished there.
Yes, sir.
That money earmarked for?
This money was in the settlement. It goes to the county, which is typical. And um, it was earmarked for. To use for opioid addiction purposes, treatment. Uh, prevention, education, uh, law enforcement. I could have came up and asked for. A, a drug investigator out of it. Number of reasons that it can be used. But our county, and it's not just our county, you know, everyone. Battles. Uh, those with addiction. And when, when those people have addiction. It's not just hurting them, it's hurting their parents, their children, their families, our school system, our EMS system, our hospitals, everybody. It takes a toll. And. It's my, my goal is to help every one of them that I can. We're, we're, we pride ourselves in being a sheriff's office. That's not just there to lock people up. I'm there to help people. And that's what I'm going to do. Uh, but that's what this money's for. Uh, most counties, uh, I did some checking around. Most counties split it between. Um, their EMS and their sheriff's office. To, because they, they battle the same thing. They answer a lot of the same calls we go to. Um. And there, the county has. Been selected, and you guys may know, I made a note yesterday. Um. There's some money's going to be coming from the state. Jackson County's been selected as a core network county and you're about to get. Around seven hundred thousand dollars. And this money is gonna. Is there to focus on the treatment of addiction. Our governor and his wife, the first lady, are huge on this. So there's a few counties around that's already gotten it and they're. Trial run to see how it worked and Jackson County's going to be the next one. So you're talking about seven hundred thousand dollars. There's going to be stipulations, but. We can help a lot of people with that. We have a jail. It doesn't have a drug treatment facility in it. It's on the sign, but it ain't in the building. Okay? We have, we have people that go in there. But I think. If, if the cards are played right here, especially with this seven hundred thousand dollars that's coming. Then the county can employ a drug counselor. Sooner or later, that is at that jail. Bay County's got a model you can go and look at. That, that they have. Cause my thing is this, you know, if there's anybody in this room that their family has not been affected. By an addiction, you a blessed person. You are a blessed person. I, I've lived it. My brother, and he's by the grace of God, he's sober. But everybody can't say that. And I'm going to help the ones that can. That's my goal. So. That being said, Mr. Chair, that's, that's a request.
I think it's, real quickly, uh, it's okay. I think it's a very justifiable request. Those opioid dollars, it certainly falls within the parameters of how those dollars should be used. I'd like to offer a motion to table this request until the next meeting so that we can uh, uh, get a look, be able to consider it and uh, talk to uh. Uh, talk to uh administration about it and take it up at the next meeting.
With all due respect. On, on that grant, is that, is that mandatory for them to use their own vehicle or they just have to use their own vehicle? Or did they get mileage or anything?
No, so they, the, the grant was written for their positions and their benefits and salaries. They don't, the, the grant didn't provide for a vehicle. Um, we have one. What we call unmarked civilian type car. Um. We have, we have several administrative employees that are. That are on the move throughout the day. Uh. We, we have a working sheriff's office, Mr. Crutchfield, you know that. We're on the go. And these ladies, most of their contacts is. And these ladies, most of their contacts is is out in the field. We take people to drug rehab, we drive them there, that's how bad I want them.
I just didn't know.
And and when I say we drive them there, we we drive them to South Florida.
Yeah, I just I figure if they if they got mileage, that mileage may go some towards.
So, yeah, and 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 to give a little history to the to the to new 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 people on the on the board, we've been down this 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 trail about a year ago. And uh it wound up with a committee meeting and a few weeks later, and that's that's been many, many, many months ago and haven't heard heard anything. So I'm here today again, my request is for three vehicles totaling about ninety-nine thousand some few dollars out of those funds.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to second Commissioner Donna Froh's motion. Okay, and she, you know, what amount of money is in that account at this point in time?
Ms. Daniels may be able to help us on those figures.
Uh, I'd have to get an updated, there's there's multiple sources that it comes from, so I can't tell you a real time figure without pulling the numbers.
I think it's, I think it's over six hundred thousand today.
But that is, that is actually, once the new board and the new year turns, something that we were hoping to spend some time with you all on. What do we, not only because of what we have, but what's coming. So I just learned of this core network right before the holiday, got an email that they want to set that up. Um, and so, you know, strategically approached this, where we do get the best bang for the buck. Um, you know, what the sheriff's office is doing is wonderful, I mean, I saw it firsthand with Drug Court, uh Stephanie Culbrough, I mean, I just got to witness how wonderful it is. Uh, but you know, also with the approach we're taking on the EMS side, I think it's unfolding in a really smart way where we're tackling it from multiple angles. Um, Dr. Spire, we'd love to have your input in that process, I know you see it every day.
And specifically?
But I can get those totals in just a minute.
And it's specifically designated to the Sheriff Department, or the influence uh attributed to like fire rescue or anything of that nature?
Yeah, so what that, right now, all we have done formally is institute the uh Community Paramedic Program, which is, but that's that's not taking all of the fun, but there's there is plenty of funds to still go around to be designated for additional.
Great, yeah, we finished, Dr. Spire?
I'm I'm done, go ahead.
Is that a grant for them three looking like gonna be continued?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it thankfully it is.
So at least you know if I'm running out, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm 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 not opposed to to Chief Reuter's Community Paramedic, that's that's not what I'm here about.
I know, I know that.
I I I have I have three ladies driving their personal vehicle, and I think that's pretty absurd.
Right, 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 yeah, I mean, if there's gonna be a continuous there, that's another thing, you know, we could have been best a little bit in towards.
And most, I I I think the county, if 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 everybody in this room puts their heads together with this money that's coming, you get the opportunity to make a difference in people's lives.
Yeah.
Mr. Don, will you, we got a motion to table until our next, please?
Yeah, we got a motion to table this until our next meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Next meeting. Dr. Spire, in a second, have a motion in a second, care this far to the next meeting, I laid it on the table today. All in favor?
I think, can I say something?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, before we vote on it.
Okay.
I think this is the first time uh in many years or forever that we've had and a uh opportunity to help people, like the sheriff said. Uh, I've been there many, many times when when mothers and fathers would come begging, crying, pleading to help their children, and we had no way to help them. Back then, there was no place to take them to.
Yes.
Uh, and I think we had a prime opportunity right now to let's let's make this thing work. Uh, because there's a lot of people in this county need some help. Uh, there's a lot of people in every county that needs some help. But it's like Ms. Daniel said, when she went to uh Drug Court's graduation, she sees it, and if if we would go, we would see it. Uh, I just had the opportunity in in my career to see it a lot on the bad side. Uh, so I think anything we can do to promote this and to help it, we need to do so. Uh, I don't have a problem with voting for it today.
I I would agree with, it's a very valid request, and I and I thank you for bringing it forward. And everybody that's involved with it.
And I mean, I I I get it, you guys want a table, but I I answered any question you got today, right now. I mean, we've, again, I'd have been in one round table for an hour and a half, and we didn't kick it down the road a little further. The money's there, I know it's there, I know what it's for, I know what what it says in the rules, what it's for. And I'm gonna help you, the sheriff's gonna help people whether or without your help, but I want you help.
Those three ladies will continue to work for another week, will they not?
Continue to work for another week?
Yep, without without this being approved today.
Of course, we gonna, we gonna help people whether you help us or not.
I'll say another week's not gonna hurt.
Well, uh, I think Commissioner Donna Froh wants to help, and uh so we'll.
I'll also say this, that, you know, I've I've been a big advocate, and I'm sure the sheriff is as well as everybody sitting at this table, that Chrome is doing a wonderful job with substance abuse, uh I've seen uh the work that they're doing. And uh Chrome is doing a wonderful job with the facility that they've got out there in helping uh men with uh uh substance abuse problems, and uh they're soon to be expanding uh to the Endeavor site uh to to begin helping with women as well.
Yes, sir, absolutely, and with that said, you know who uh, you know who hooks that up from the jail today?
Yeah.
My three girls.
Yeah.
So I I know, I know all about Chrome, all about it.
It's a community effort, it's a big problem, uh and not just opioid, but other substance abuse, whether that be alcoholism or or other other types of drugs. Uh, but it's a, it's a problem that uh not only impacts Jackson County, but impacts our entire nation, entire world. Uh, if anything that we can do to to help with that is uh is beneficial.
Oh, I I think uh Sheriff May can give us that information today.
It won't be right now, all of you will put time to work on it, just all being committed to it and everything, I'll let you go.
I can absolutely have it by Tuesday as far as the the balances of everything.
Well, well, I'll need to come back Tuesday.
It probably the Sheriff did have time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So as part of my motion was to include that on the agenda for Tuesday's meeting.
About it? Yeah, you want to vote, all right, getting tired of last afternoon. We got a all in favor from Mr. Don Froh's motion. For next board meeting? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just have another topic when you're done with this one, I just have one more topic when you're done.
Okay, good, that's fine, we get.
Okay.
Uh, we'll hold on y'all till we get there. All in favor of Commissioner Don Froh's motion? Uh, yeah, three, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, see you guys Tuesday.
Bad. All right, madam.
Okay, so it just happened that the special meeting fell before the legislative delegation meeting, which will be at two o'clock today at Rivertown Community Church, so um of course you all are invited and encouraged to attend. Uh, but normally, it's just the way it falls around the holidays when they have it in the spring, it makes it a little difficult sometimes to have these conversations ahead of time. Uh, but since we had this opportunity today, I wanted to let you all discuss what your legislative priorities might be. You do not have to decide them today, I don't have to present that today. Um, but if you all feel that you could. So what I'm passing around is just something that staff uh worked on based on the last several years. But you all may have additional priorities or totally different priorities, so this is your list to adopt. Uh, this is just strictly for talking purposes. Uh, so just to remind you, the last two years, um in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, you all received from the legislature five hundred thousand for the Endeavor Convention Center out at uh the gym. You all received, the the county received pay increases for the correctional officers. And then uh one point three million was reimbursed for the January ninth tornadoes. And then the twenty-two, twenty-three legislative request that was received was one million dollars for the Endeavor Conference Center. And so what we have here as far as just one recommendation after looking at a number of things. So what we do is, we have a running list of projects that you all mentioned over time. If we can identify grant source to go after, we don't want to put that on a legislative request, of course. And so one project that has been circulating for some time is, we have two fire stations that are very, very outdated and need a lot of work, that's um the one on Highway seventy-one, which is Station Five, and of course, the one in Sneets. So one, we just wanted to have a conversation on is Station Five on Howie, Howie seventy-one. And the reason this came up is, uh, we've been informed by our representatives that this year's going to be much leaner in the budget process, and they're going to be focusing on disaster-related requests. Um, so what this request would be, if you all are interested in it, is the hardening of Station Five, which would entail a new exterior shell generator, updated HVAC, just a total renovation and bringing that into uh code. We're proposing a not to exceed amount of two million dollars, because we don't have a firm estimate for that just yet. Um, but completely open to your all priorities as well if you want to change that request.
Other, what, just as a reminder, what are some of the other projects that we have discussed in the past?
Uh, so the Ag Center on Highway ninety is one that we've circulated multiple times uh to do some upgrades there. I I know it has been done in the past, but in the last few years, it's been circulated again. Um, what am I missing? Powell's Landing, but we got some funding for that through a different source. We've identified a potential source to go, so that's why we took it off of this list. Um, we have been successful in getting new ambulances in the past. Um, you know, the the list has dwindled significantly because we've been successful at identifying other grants. But we really try to find something that doesn't fit other grant moles.
And this particular project kind of fits, what I think I heard you say, kind of fits within the funding priorities?
Exactly, that that's why this one, as we tried to look at, well, they told us it's gonna be leaner, so maybe we shouldn't act for a lot of projects. And they said they want to focus on disaster. So.
Roads.
Roads can, they will do some road stuff, uh it can be a little more difficult because if they identify that it fits in scab, scrap or scop, or, you know, they'll try to funnel you back that way. But it's not, I mean, it is allowed to ask for one.
One thing we ought to be asking for some funding for is, if we don't, we don't do something with our roads.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. But you're you're finished with that?
Yes.
I have something I want to bring in front of the whole board, and uh and not that tough, you can make your own decision about it. When we have complaints, and we have plenty of them, and I'll get my share of them. Sometime we never hear about it again, just as the hogs and other thing, roads problem. It, can we think about having a program where there's a follow-up and either a memo sent or a call made or something, where we won't just be looking out there in the air? One of the most embarrassing things is, is to not know what's going on. And uh I wish this board would consider something, even if it's just mediocre, uh to where we will be no, well, you know, instead of just by having me seeing some of them or something like that, that we report to the whole board, even if it's just nothing but a little memo or something, or email or something. And of course, I'm hamstrung because I can't get emails, because I don't know how. But anyway, I learned to get, to take, I'm man enough to admit my weaknesses. But uh, I don't, I don't know what the conception of the board is, but at the same time, I don't, I don't want to be left in the dark, I guess, as well.
Well, and I will say this, that, you know, of course, it may be that, uh, you know, I run a business, my office is two and a half blocks away.
Well, mine thinks.
Yeah, so if I'm in a, I'm in a little different situation than maybe the rest of you. Um, but I have absolutely no problem staying up to date on any issues that come about because I, you know, contact Will Ann or I contact Red or Jeffrey and uh, you know, kind of take it upon myself to to stay up to date on those issues that uh uh are impacting the entire board or impacting my district. And uh Will Ann and and her key staff always make themselves very uh available and are very responsive to any requests that that I have, so. Uh, and I, and I'll do email quite a bit, which makes it, you know, and text, which makes it uh a lot easier to communicate uh without having to actually pick up the phone and uh, you know. So I don't, don't have a problem with it. And also, I think something else that we do at the end of every board meeting, which I think is very beneficial, is uh have a little bit of a round table, uh where it should, if there is an issue that's kind of out there hanging, that gives each each commissioner an opportunity to to bring it back up to staff so they can address it at that point in time.
Well, and that, and that's a good, that's a good way to to look at it, commissioner. But at the same time, if that begins and happens between two weeks.
Yeah.
You know, you're kind of hamstrung, but I respect that. If I if I were building a project for you, you would want to hear from me if I had a problem. And uh I understand that and accept that because I'm used to that. But at the same time, uh all of us are not as handy sometime. And some of us tend to complain sometime that they never hear about, you know? But at the same time, to be reminded or told what's going on. What do you, have you heard what they did with the with the pigs, with the hogs, bear pop?
I I know they're still out there. They're they're still out there.
I give my time back, but anyway, that's just something to think about for all of us, especially for me. But I would like to know from time to time, if we need to poll the board, we we will, you know? But I just, we just, I got to have some kind of way to communicate with somebody, you know?
And and I think also, Commissioner Westbrook, that, you know, this time of the year, in between our our last meeting in November, when you get in Thanksgiving holidays, we always meet a little bit less.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a a a part of the year that I've seen uh that uh it's easy to get away from issues.
Well, and I thought the issue about the utility was was big enough that we should bring it to the board and and not wait for the next week or ten days because they had immediate schedule to have a public hearing before our next board meeting. That was uh, that was my reasoning for that. But anyway, at the same time, if they would consider it, we don't have to vote on it today. We'll bring it to a vote at a different time, and.
I would ask that if if you would uh develop some kind of program? You know, the easiest way to do that? Uh, I I have, sometimes I have problems, sometimes I don't.
So I I need y'all to just tell me directly what you're asking, like, like road issues, any issues, I mean?
Any issue that's a problem.
I think especially the issues that we call in about.
That you, okay, so if you, so if you call in something, you, you're just saying the follow-up of what happened with it, basically.
You know, a lot of times I follow it, but sometimes I don't, you know, I get.
Yeah.
About it.
Thank you for baiting me out there, Commissioner, I don't sound like I knew it was.
Well, now, I I think that, I think y'all are kind of talking two different things, but I hear what you both say. And so you're, you mean you want a routine follow-up on Light Blue Springs Highway?
Well, you you've done a very good job of keeping me informed a lot of time. But we'll have two or three or four that slip through track, and maybe we can, we can.
Well, now, you know, the hogs, I did try to update, but I don't know that I got to all of you. Right after Christmas, there was twelve to fourteen that had been caught or removed, but I'm sure that's increased by now. Up to forty now. So Rhett, why don't you give an an overall update on that?
So I was actually planning on doing this at the next board meeting, um but way schedules worked out. So our uh contracted trappers have been out multiple times a week, even through the holidays. They've got four traps set up, one kind of triangulated between the jail and the ag complex, and then some others scattered throughout the property. But yeah, so we're up to forty as of this morning, total uh captured and removed. Traps are reset, and they check them nightly, or, you know, via cameras, and then if they need to go, they come every morning. So that number's gonna continue to go up.
Well.
Are they still charging per hog?
It's hourly, based on their time and equipment.
And the Blue Springs Highway is, the last time the gentleman came, the engineer. And Commissioner Don's road questioned him pretty darn good. But I have not heard one word since, and I'm still driving over that rough road. And all the people that live out that way, and I think you do from time to time. Right, well, and I probably go across it four, five times a day. And uh, so that's where I'm coming from. We still struggling, I know you got a different contractor there. But at the same time. The the problem is still there.
They got they got the north travel lane paved partially, I guess, the first lift down.
Right, the biggest problem we've had since then is. We followed a DOT schedule, and they shut down for two weeks, basically, I mean, they allow no road work, lane closures, anything like that. So now that we're back up and running, they'll be working on the south lane.
And they were working last week as well? I'm I'm by there every day.
Did they get the issue solved with the piping? They did figure out where it was leaking and and get whatever, get it resolved as far as.
The camera work, um it turned out it was a couple of the manholes that were lined. They're gonna be lined to seal that off, so our engineers and inspectors prior to paving. Cause that was one of the big holdups, we want to make sure we had the water stopped before we fix the road ahead of or above it. Um, so that's all been taken care of, and now it's a scheduling issue between paving contractor and getting the rest of the road work done.
Anything else?
I I I do.
Okay, go right there.
It's okay, and again, this is kind of one of the things that toward the end of the meeting that we can give a little update on. If you don't mind, you and I had a conversation about the Endeavor Housing Development Project. And the last conversation that you and I had, it was of the city of Marianna, was still uh going through the the rezoning or the.
Yeah, it's got to go through what's called a PUD, which is a Planned Unit Development Process. And so it's when a development's going to exceed the local allowances. For how many units can go as be submitted to the state for approval, and it's in that process. So I actually think, I don't think we're waiting on the city, I think the city's waiting on the developer to submit that final plan that they can transmit to the state.
And then relative to, I was talking to a contractor this morning, I understand the Green Circle. The Circle K project is actually out to bid now, is.
I believe that's correct.
And so we.
Cause they've gotten their permit, you know, their development order and everything.
And that project is going to include a a good portion of the road work on Pusher Road, or is that just the building only?
That it gets a little confusing there, because the there's some realignment happening, they have some grant. We have a grant, but they're using their grant for the realignment, correct?
And they've actually, in order to see the project through, the Circle K has actually come out of their own pocket significantly. To uh complete the site work with the road realignment, so it's actually being moved further down. To create an additional corner lot or triangle lot between there and Penn Avenue. So working through that as well, and the, but the utility work is ongoing, they've already started that, running water and sewer down Pusher.
So the 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 pipe that we're seeing out there right now, and there's been some heavy equipment out there, is that part of? Is that part of the sewer project that's bringing sewer to the city of Marianna from Alfred, or is that part of the Circle K project?
Some of both, so the city's had a grant for many months, trying to make a loop around Endeavor property. So that's what you're seeing on Pusher itself, now what's going down Penn and Kinsville, that is a separate project. So they're they're working together um in the same area, but it's two different projects. What you're seeing on Pusher is to get to the housing uh project.
Yeah, well, I just needed a little clarity on the priorities, do y'all want to take this and wait? I don't have to talk about pri- priorities this afternoon. Uh, and I can just, you know, tell them that we are working through those and we'll be meeting with them directly.
I mean, I know that there are issues at Station Five, I know it's been in discussions to to do work out there for a long time. Uh, it sounds like to me, if this falls squarely within what the state's funding priorities are. I guess my question would be, you know, the two million dollars is just basically kind of a a guesstimate at this point in time. Um, you know, it's always a gamble as to, you don't want to ask for too little, but you don't want to ask for too much either. Do you feel like the two million dollars is a?
Well, I actually put not. I actually put not to exceed two million, so that I could talk with our lobbyist Alan Zusky in more detail over what the amount he would recommend. Uh, he may say I wouldn't go over a million. On the roads, the challenge is, he always says a million is about where you want to be. Which I realize this is over, that's why I want to talk that through with him. And so, I mean, you really would be having to pick one road for about a million dollars. I mean, unless unless they do something that I've never seen them do before with a large amount.
And and you're, and all and almost, you almost have to select an actual specific project. I mean, you can't go and say, you know, we want a million dollars to improve roads in Jackson County, or to pay dirt roads in Jackson County. It's got to, it's got to have some specifics to the quest.
I wonder what can do that.
They need a hundred million.
Well, yeah, and I, and you've got one, and I've got one, and everybody, everybody's got.
I will say too, just because I mentioned this this afternoon, if that's the direction of the board, that doesn't lock us in. If something comes up between now and the time that applications are due.
I may get run out of town for saying this, but I'd rather. Ask for money for roads than have other.
That's that's pretty important to me, and I think it's important to me.
If we if we had to do away with all the other requests, if they'd give us some money for roads.
Like a legislative appropriation?
Again, repaving their roads or, yeah.
Have we gotten any funds from the President Initiative to do something with uh infrastructure development, better roads, getting those funds?
We have applied, that was the Raze Program, I don't remember what we applied for that.
That was, we basically resubmitted our applications from last year. So we resubmitted uh two projects, I believe that would be um the Delwood Cypress Road. And. I don't recall the other one, I got two coming to mind.
What was some of the criteria that that were utilized in in submitting the road? What was some of the criteria that?
Commerce, uh so trying to. We're focused around the uh lumber mill in Cypress, so Jeff reminded me, was Orlando Road. Which is off of Alliance going into Calvin County, so Calvin County has paved their side of that road where it comes from Calvin. Then we got a section of dirt between um Alliance and Calvin County. So a lot of that Calvin County logging traffic is coming through there, coming to the Cypress Lumber Mill. And then likewise, when it leaves the mill, you go into Cedar Springs mostly, but um that's the one we focused on. Trying to create additional avenues for those logging trucks to get to and from the mill.
Will there be the opportunity to submit some other roads or projects?
Under the federal. Um, at the next cycle, yep, but that's typically something. Um, whenever they send out notices of funding, we look through the parameters and looked at some of the previous projects that were awarded. See kind of how we align, so once that process kicks off, we'll actually be resubmitting.
Do you have an idea when that cycle will begin?
Just closed, so I mean, it'll be another probably eight to ten months. Thank you.
The um, the website does have you as chairman, I don't know if you care about that or not, but just wanted you to know, you're listed as chairman on the website.
I'm sure I'm.
I have nothing else, so I'm I'm going to not say specifically what we're asking for, and we'll bring this back up next Tuesday.
Commissioner Bryant's move, we're right.